Commissioner Kizer is absent. Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Chair McCoy?
Here.
Commissioner Osick?
Here.
Commissioner Hoy?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Here.
Please join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, Vice Chair Lewis, you've got any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. We're to public comment. Does anybody want to address the Housing Authority of the City of Salem? Seeing none, we'll move along to the consent calendar, Vice Chair Lewis.
Yes, I move a passage of the consent calendar as submitted.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Nanki, to approve the consent calendar to your motion.
Yes, on tonight's consent calendar is the minutes from the May 29 Housing Authority meeting, and then there are also four resolutions. The first one, 3.3A, is a resolution to authorize application for up to $425,000 of housing development grant from Oregon Health Authority to provide affordable housing at 4107 Fisher Road Northeast. And just a reminder, this is the project that would help, this funding would help finish the building, and which would add 35 more affordable units to the city's housing stock. A second resolution is 3.3B, and that is to adopt Salem Housing Authority's 2018-19 Public Housing Authority Plan that has to be submitted to the Housing and Urban Development. A third one, 3.3C, is amending the authority's public contracting rules to update it to comply with state law. And the final resolution is to authorize an application for funding from HUD, Section 811, for 500 mainstream housing vouchers for non-elderly persons with disabilities. The value of that would be $4.8 million.
Okay. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Information report? You've got a program management report? Andy, you've got anything to report or talk about?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more business to come before us, this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem is adjourned. Okay, I call to, first of all, welcome all you folks, green shirts. Thanks for coming. We'd much rather speak to a full house than an empty house, so thanks for your attendance tonight. We now call the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem to order. Please call the roll.
Board Member Kizer, absent. Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Osick?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Cook?
Here.
And Board Member Lewis?
Here.
And Chair Bennett is absent.
Okay. Any public comment? Anybody want to speak before the Urban Renewal Agency? Public comment? Nope. Okay, we'll move right along. Councilor Nanki, the consent calendar?
I would move the consent calendar as provided.
Moved by Councilor Nanki, seconded by Councilor Hoy to approve the consent calendar to your motion, Counselor.
Yeah, on the Urban Renewal Agency consent calendar this evening, we have minutes from the May 29, 2018 meeting. Again, and you'll see this in the council meeting as well, amending the agency's public contracting rules across all of our entities, and that is the extent of our consent calendar this evening.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We then move to public hearing. So, open, I open?
Okay. The Urban Renewal Agency will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on the fiscal year 2019 budget. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm Kelly Jacobs. I'm the City and Urban Renewal Agency's Budget Officer. The Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee recommended a budget to the agency board on May 9, 2018. The agency board is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. In compliance with state public budget law, this evening's public hearing was noticed in the Statesman Journal on May 31, 2018. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the Urban Renewal Agency Board deliberate on the budget committee recommended budget, and direct staff to return on June 25, 2018, with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2019 Urban Renewal Agency budget. At that meeting, staff may request the agency board to amend the fiscal year 2019 budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from the fiscal year 2018 budget, which staff are currently identifying. Thank you.
Okay, questions? We have no public testimony. Okay, we have no public testimony. Questions of staff? Hearing none. Okay, I will close the hearing. The first for me, Counselor Nanki.
I would move staff recommendation.
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Anderson to approve the staff recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seeing no more business do we have, we adjourn the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Okay. Call the roll, please. Whoops, I gotta open the city council meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilor Kizer is absent. Councilor Anderson?
Present.
Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor McCoy?
Here.
Councilor Osick?
Here.
Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Councilor Cook?
Here.
Councilor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett is absent.
Hey, Councilor Nanki, additions and deletions to the agenda?
Yeah, I would move the additions as contained in the yellow sheets on the Counselors' desks.
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Hoy to approve the additions to the agenda to your motion?
Yeah, 3.2B fees and charges for services. We revised an attachment on, increased planning fees, and then added a supplemental report to 4D, well, that's public hearing, so.
Thank you. Counselors, anything to the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are to council and city manager comment. Counselors, any comments? Nope. City manager?
Yes, thank you. I do have several related to our water advisory. First, I'd like to thank counselors and staff, many are in this room, and the public for their support and cooperation during the past 10 days since we were last together. We have extended the water advisory. Decision was made to extend the water advisory even though we've had two good days of samples. Samples that were received yesterday were the second day of samples below the EPA thresholds. The two-week extension is to assure the public, to assure council, that our water will be safe to drink by adding a technique that Public Works Director Fernandez could speak to in a moment. We're also receiving excellent cooperation from local partners. Willamette University is helping us be ready for when the initial screening testing is delivered, and we're able to do that testing on-site. The water stations continue to be available to the public even though the water is safe for everyone to drink, and our information center was going, if not full staff, certainly well-staffed to answer questions that are still coming in, as well as to give a tour to Senate President Peter Courtney today. I would like Peter to speak briefly on the results this, over the weekend, perhaps even results from today on our testing of the carbon that will be, that was shared with the public, and looks promising as a solution to our toxin challenge in the water system. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. This morning, we received our initial report about the lab work that's being done to see if the powdered activated carbon process will work to remove the toxins from the raw water entering our treatment plant. The results, as expected, are very promising. What Corolla engineers were working on this weekend primarily is dosing and mixing, so they received, we ordered a truckload of powdered activated carbon from California. The truck, I think, arrives tomorrow at Garren Island. In the meantime, 40 pounds were sent to the Corolla lab in Boise, Idaho. We had also sent 40 gallons of raw water, of our own raw water, so that they could do testing with our actual constituents. Testing on-site at Garren Island will begin later this week. We actually have pilot filters because we've been doing other tests out there for other issues that we've been experimenting with. So we will first use the pilot filters. We will then move to using one of our filters, and our expectation is that we will be, assuming everything goes well, we will be fully operational by the week of the 25th. And then once we are fully operational and the powdered activated carbon is removing the toxins and the water is running through the filters, as soon as the tests prove that that is the case, then we will be able to lift the advisory and hopefully, with this new technique, not have to worry about alkaline toxins for the rest of this season, and then certainly next season, before we move to a more permanent solution, which we will talk to council about later this year.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much, Director Fernandez. I wonder if you could speak briefly to two matters. One is just exactly how does this testing work, or not the testing, the additional treatment work to remove the toxins? And then what sort of warning, I mean, we're gonna have more of these in the warmer weather, and so how will we know when it's time for us to activate this treatment again at Garren Island?
Yes. So, activated carbon is a well-known method for removing all kinds of impurities from water, not just toxins. It just happens to be good at that. It's really very simple. Our consultant today, Jude Grounds, basically described it as if you take a piece of charcoal and break it up into dust and throw it in the water, that dust will collect, will bind the toxins that are in the water, and that's really all we're gonna be doing, is introducing it into the initial channel where the water comes into the plant, mixing it, and then removing it before putting it in the filters. And then the filters will do the same work they've been doing for us since 1935, just with the toxins and correctly, a lot of other, any other impurities that are in the water will be primarily removed at that point, and then we can run it through the process. We intend to continue to test both the finished water and the raw water and the reservoir water. We are introducing, we'll continue to report the numbers as we get them. We are introducing in our webpage a gauge that we are borrowing from the City of Toledo, since they have this issue every year in their water where we will tell-
Toledo, Ohio, not Toledo, Oregon.
Thank you. Toledo, Ohio, the big Toledo. Thank you. Toledo, Ohio, where people will very quickly visually be able to see, are there, is there no algae around? Is there toxins around? Are there toxins that we're seeing but not in our water? And then, and you'll be able to go on-site, onto our website, and see that. So our intent, even when we introduce this treatment methodology, will be to continue to test and report.
So let's say that on day one, we discover doing testing up in Detroit Lake that there are now toxins there, and they are coming through the Detroit Lake Dam. How much time do we have to get things prepared down at Garren Island? I mean, I know the answer to this because we've discussed it, but I'd like the public to know how long it would take. In other words, we have some sort of safety interval to get things hopping down at Garren Island.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. Our estimate is that it takes three days for water to travel from the Big Cliff Pool, so from the face of the Detroit Reservoir, the downstream face, the west face, to the entry point at Garren Island. So we will be drawing, I will continue to sample throughout the area. By introducing activated carbon, I mean, our plan is to run it, and unless we start to see zeros consistently, our plan is to add the activated carbon and just run-
On a regular.
-on a regular basis, unless we really start seeing long stretches of zeros. If we see any algae, I mean, the system will be set up, we'll just run the process so that we don't find ourselves in this situation again. I mean, that's really, we wanna assure our customers and our residents that really this issue, we have addressed this issue, so that's what we're working toward. If I may, then I'll also talk about the other purchase that we made last week, which is purchasing a machine that will help us do the test locally. The machine will produce the ELISA, E-L-I-S-A, it's an acronym. Don't ask me to, the last word is assay. I forget what the first four words are. But it is the screening test that we can use. That machine will arrive later this week, and the technician to install it and train us on how to use the machine will arrive the following week. So at about the same time that the activated carbon will be in place, we'll be able to do our own testing and not have to send those tests to our contract lab. The more specific test, the test that we rely on to do health advisories, will continue to be run by our lab in Ohio, because that's a much more complicated test, and the machinery for that is significantly more expensive. So we pulled the trigger on the ELISA machine, but not the LCMS MS machine. In the meantime, the city manager alluded to it. Professor Marx, who's a microbiology professor at Willamette University, has graciously offered her microbiology lab to us. A couple of our lab technicians were actually there today setting up so that we can start practicing on how to do, she does not own an ELISA machine, there is a way to do these tests by hand, and so our people will start practicing at Willamette's lab this week and some of next week before the ELISA machine arrives. So we are very appreciative of Professor Marx's offer to offer her lab to us, and we have graciously accepted.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, Peter, could you give the cost of the testing equipment, and then also the granular solution? That will be good for two years, I understand.
Yes. So the machine, I think we paid $37,000 for us, for it, so that's on its way. By comparison, the LCMS MS testing machine is $250,000. So we decided that the screening test, so that will help us with the operations of the plant, was the right purchase for us to use in conjunction with this new treatment methodology. Our estimate is that introducing powdered activated carbon into the raw water will cost us about $2 million this season. The bulk of that cost is the carbon itself. The carbon's very expensive and has to be shipped in from California. Our sense at this point is that we will run that this year, and we will probably run it next year at a similar cost, and then by the third year, two years out, we should have a more permanent solution in place that will have a capital cost and an operational cost, but it will be, we're thinking it's probably gonna be introduction of ozone into the raw water and not activated carbon.
And we'll be bringing a more complete report to council for your meeting on June 25.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay. Thank you, Peter, and I think on behalf of the council, I could say thank you for all the hard work the city staff has done, and hours and hours of work, late nights and then weekends, folks on the, what is it, Joint Information Committee?
Many, many.
But just many, many people out here making sure that we're dealing with this in the most effective way we can, getting the information out to the folks, and not only reacting, but being proactive, as you can see, looking at what we're gonna do in the short term, and then the near term, and the long term, to make sure the water, we don't deal with this, we solve this problem, and our water is the water we've come to expect over all these years before this incident occurred. So thank you very much. Okay. No other council comment. Where are proclamations to this thing? Okay. Can you hear me? First one, Mr. Fernandez, come on down. I don't know if this is ironic or appropriate, Peter. Whereas City of Salem employees provide critical services and protect the health and safety of its residents and visitors, and whereas Salem Public Works employees construct, maintain, and operate the infrastructure necessary that fulfill basic urban needs, including safe and reliable streets, healthy and plentiful water, well-functioning storm drainage, proper treatment of wastewater, and maintaining parks facilities, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of Public Works officials, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of a community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Public Works Department is influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the important work they perform. And now therefore I, on behalf of Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, who is in Great Britain, do hereby proclaim June 21, 2018, as Public Works Day, and encourage community members to participate in Public Works Day at Riverfront Park on June 21, as well as ask people to join me in recognizing the importance of the standards for excellence in the Public Works Department, and the contributions Public Works officials make every day to our health, safety, and quality of life dated this 11th day of June 2018. Chuck Bennett, Mayor of Salem.
Thank you so much. First of all, of course, we invite everyone to come out to Public Works Day. We've been doing it for 12 years, 15 years. Gets bigger and better every year, and lots of big toys for the kids to play on, and great time to interact with our staff and with the community. I'd like, if I may, I'd like to introduce Matt Starbuck. He's the president of our AFSMI Local, who does a great job. Obviously, all of our labor is represented by AFSMI. They're here today, I don't think for Public Works Day, but that's a different story. If we could have our, anyone who's a Public Works employee, please stand, whether you're AFSMI or not.
The next one's Make Music Day. Carly Wright, Mark Green, the co-organizers, if you could come on up. Welcome. Okay, here we go. Whereas Make Music Day Salem is an annual one-day festival on the first day of summer, the longest day of the year, that celebrates the ability of everyone to make music, and whereas Make Music Day Salem is part of the international celebration inspired by France's Fête de la Musique, which began in 1982 with events in 750 cities across 120 countries, and whereas Make Music Day Salem involves musicians, bands, and ensembles from a diverse array of styles and genres, including everything from classical, jazz, and blues to folk, pop, rock, and world music, and whereas Make Music Day is a wonderful way to make music in the community and raise awareness that creating music is for everyone, and whereas music has been shown to strengthen social connectivity, reduce stress, lower blood pressure, stimulate memory, and is integral to a well-rounded, enjoyable life. And now therefore I, on behalf of Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim June 21, 2018, as Make Music Day Salem, and encourage the community to celebrate the joy of making music, dated this 18th day of May, 2018. Chuck Bennett, Mayor.
I would just like to invite everyone out on June 21. We will have live music all over Salem, so get out and enjoy it.
Thank you very much for doing this. Final one is World Refugee Day, and Alice Phelan? Whoop, got two people. Hi, Alice. Welcome. Whereas the United Nations General Assembly decreed in 2001 in Resolution 55/76 to mark the 50th anniversary of the 1951 Convention on the Status of Refugees, with an annual observance of World Refugee Day on June 20, and whereas World Refugee Day draws the public's attention to adults and children worldwide who are forced to flee their homes, and honors their courage, strength, and determination, and whereas America's leadership in international relief efforts has helped expand protections for countless refugees, and provided a home to some of our world's most vulnerable individuals, and whereas the Salem City Council approved Resolution Number 20217-22 on February 27, 2017 relating to inclusivity, and whereas council on this date affirmed its commitment to making Salem a welcoming and inclusive community for its immigrant and refugee neighbors, as well as a community that embraces and celebrates their contributions, and whereas thanks to a growing network of community members, businesses, government organizations, nonprofits, resettlement agencies, and faith communities, refugees have the ability to thrive in Salem. And now therefore I, Steve McCoy, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim June 20, 2018, as World Refugee Day, and call upon the community to become more aware of issues related to Salem's newest neighbors and offer friendship and support, dated this 11th day of June, 2018. Steve McCoy.
On behalf of the Salem Chapter of the United Nations, and also the Salem for Refugees Group, I am delighted to accept this proclamation. We do not have any special event for June 20, but I would invite all of you to come to any of our monthly meetings that we have on the first Monday. This is the Salem for Refugees Group, and we generally have 100-plus community volunteers who are coming to find out what can they do to make a difference in this community. We have over 135 refugees who have joined our community, new neighbors, in the last year and a half, and it's valuable that we actually have over 300 volunteers working with them on a daily and weekly basis. So we are very pleased to accept this award, and very pleased with the reception we've received in Salem.
Well, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your efforts. It's great. Thank you very much. And that is that for the proclamations. Dirk Dunning? And you wanna talk about the budget, Dirk?
Well, the Timmy package of the budget.
Okay, that sounds like a budget comment, so welcome. Your name and your address or your ward, and you've got three minutes, two minutes, the yellow light will come on in front of you, three minutes, the red light comes on.
Very good, thank you. I'm Dirk Dunning. I'm at 1955 Park Avenue, Northeast, in Salem. I spent my career as a chemical engineer, also a nuclear engineer, and a bunch of others. And I had a couple of talks- And I had a couple of topics, all of them in one way or another end up relating to the budget, but that's pretty much how everything always works. The first one is to commend the city on your actions on the water. A lot of what you've done is exemplary, and it's well worth commendation. Particularly, the most recent suspension on the water for two weeks is absolutely wonderful. That ensures protection rather than trying to go the other way. There are some difficulties with ozone. I'd be happy to chat with staff about. I've spent a career working with it. There's things to watch out for there. Wonderful thing to use, though. The second topic goes along with it is that in the water distribution systems for the bulk water, one of the things I saw in the news was a lot of PVC piping. We've known for 40 years not to use PVC in potable water piping. What happens is the PVC is loaded with a class of chemicals called phthalates. They're highly toxic, particularly to young children and infants. The likely amount of exposure is going to be very small given the limited time and the temperatures, but it's something to be careful about, that there are other alternatives that are much better. My bigger topic is one that is, in the words of Senator Wyden, quite frightening. The city has recently converted all of the street lighting to LED. There was a study done in Los Angeles not long ago, then the National Nurses Health Study coming out of Canada and Harvard, and more recently out of Haifa, Israel, and most recently, a month ago, out of Barcelona, Spain. They've had their streetlights a bit longer, and so there's been time for the impacts to occur. What they've now seen is that the LED street lighting is correlated to a 47% rise in breast cancer rates and 105% rise in prostate cancer rates. It's occurring because the lights inhibit the body's production of the hormone melatonin, the sleep hormone, which then interferes with healing and sleep, and it isn't then limited to these two cancers. It's related to a whole lot of other things. Anyway, I would encourage the city to be careful. The intent behind the LEDs was good, to fight climate change. The reality is turning out to be absolutely terrifying. I've been working with Senator Merkley and Wyden's staff, as well as Representative Schrader's staff. They're now in, getting the Congressional Research Service involved to try to gather more data, but it's something that may have a very large impact on the city if you do nothing, and an equally large impact if you do something and remove them. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you for coming down, sharing your expertise. Next, we have Jan Kaidats.
Counselors, hi, everybody. Well, it's nice to see you, but of course, when I'm here, 2275 Coral, we have called 911 three times in the last two weeks. There's three windows that's been broken into three times. This is to our knowledge. I mean, after everything was cleaned up and the shed was taken down, totally relaxed, life was good. Yes, it was. Now, it's back to squatters. The last 911 call was last Thursday night, and three officers, I do have their number and their names, came, and they spent quite some time talking to this guy that just walked in right into that house. That's when we called 911. And he said he was a construction person, that, oh, I can take care of this house, clean it up, blah, blah, blah. Well, he didn't look like any construction, there was no car, no truck with a name on it, no nothing, but the officers were wonderful, and actually, every officer from the beginning have all been wonderful to us. Talked quite lengthy. Well, my husband was on a walk today, and he's seen him pushing a cart around, so he wasn't a construction worker. But anyway, our big thing is, we need TLC. The officers feel terrible. I mean, there's nothing they can do. Their hands are tied because there's no TLC. My husband on Friday talked to, I've got her card, Kate, from the David Burgess Associates, and she's a property owner and manager, and she said, it's owned by Ditec, and the office is either in Minnesota or Philadelphia. And she, this was last Friday when my husband talked with her, and she was going to get back to us if she finds something else. Because she goes, yes, we know how hard it is when the banks take over and stuff, but we have to have a TLC. One of these times, because we have a scanner, we are very well knowledgeable what these homeless can do with the guns and knives threatened if officers come to where they're at. And it's getting scary. We're not sleeping again. We're afraid to leave our house. It's just been, it's just been way too crazy, and there's been a lot, and I mean a lot, more traffic around, and especially at the one on Vaughn. And it's, please, TLC. The neighbors are all worried. They have children. There's, they find needles, and there's prostitution. There's kids around. Kids don't need to be around things like that. None of us should be, but especially kids. But we, we need to get something done. But for 2275, a TLC. We're trying. There's nowhere else we can go. We've asked, we've talked, we can't go anywhere. I don't know. There's got to be a way in this computer age to find out who is in charge. Thank you, guys, for your time. Any questions?
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for coming in, coming down again. I really appreciate it. I have a question for staff. I was wondering if Mr. Wright or perhaps Mr. Rogers could maybe update us on where we're at with that whole process. I know this has been an ongoing issue, one that's very frustrating for the neighbors, and I think a little frustrating for staff, so I'd appreciate an update.
Yeah, certainly. I'm the community development director, and Brady Rogers is here today, so I defer to him on the great efforts that he and his team have provided.
Thank you very much. My name is Brady Rogers. I'm with the, I'm your Neighborhood Enhancement Division Administrator. There's two houses there. The one at 2275 Coral Avenue, we worked that case as a semi-derelict building, got it secured, the windows, doors repaired, the grass cut, the shed hauled away, all the debris from the kitchen fire hauled away, and at a certain point, we have to call it good when it's just a vacant house, and we get it to that point, we, we have to go on to the next place. I understand that there's occasional trespassers there now. That is a matter for the Salem Police. In terms of the TLC, the trespass letter of consent, we've attempted on four occasions to get the bank at this location to sign the TLC and get it back to us. It is rather an unusual occurrence for a bank or a property management company to issue a TLC. Usually, it's just the direct owners that do it, but we have tried on many occasions here. On the house on Vaughn Avenue, I think it's probably one of the City of Salem's finest hours this year. We had, actually, none of us, none of the departments individually had the resources to do anything effectively there, but we, the police chief and I and some others thought out a neighborhood service team, and we sent a code officer and two police officers by the Vaughn property. They made a total of, I think it was, I don't see Jerry, I think it was 10 arrests, yeah, 10 arrests. So, the bad guys were taken away from that property. The property owners were cited for having so much junk. Shortly thereafter, there was a donation of a 60-yard dumpster by our friends at Pacific Sanitation that they dropped off there, and the elderly gentleman who lives at that property and many of his friends, nephews, just filled that thing to the brim. The code officer who's assigned that case tells me he thinks anywhere from 60 to 80% of all the junk is gone. There are two vehicles in the driveway there that are considered junk. They really just need to be licensed and registered, and possibly one more, one more dumpster like we had before might finish this whole thing off, and, and then that would just be a regular house, too. So, those are the efforts that we put into it, and it was Salem Police, Community Development, Urban Development, they're supplying the parking enforcement for the new parking signs law in June, and Public Works for getting those signs installed in the first place. So, four departments came together for that solution.
Thank you, if I could follow up.
Yes.
So, your advice to the Kadatsas is just to continue to call 911 when they see people on the Coral Avenue, in the Coral Avenue House?
On the Coral Avenue, if it's just a vacant house, it's legal for a house just to be vacant, but if somebody's trespassing, that is a crime, and they should call the Salem Police Department.
Thank you.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you. Brady, I just had a question regarding the out-of-state landlord property. At what point do you begin fining that landlord if the house isn't up to code? Is that, does the house have to be declared derelict? What's that process?
Well, there could be any number of reasons we have an issue for a house. Of course, if the first step is communication. At this property, we never really declared it derelict. There were property maintenance violations. In theory, we could have issued an out-of-state owner, a, what am I saying? An out-of, a civil penalty for up to, up to $2,000, probably not that much. It would have been probably like $400 or $500, but it's, at a certain level, it's counterproductive. We want the banks to come on board with us, to put effort, not into fighting us in court, but to getting the property in good shape.
Thank you.
I have a question. What would a trespass letter of consent do? I mean, what would the result be if you did get one?
Well, somebody owns every property here in Oregon, and if you have written instructions from the property owner, which is a trespass letter of consent, it's the owner of the property giving permission for the police to actually arrest anybody that's on the property. So, it's that consent from the owner. Banks, like I say, very rarely, I think I've, in my career, I've only heard of it like a couple of times, two, three times, but we did try here.
So, in the case of the 911 call, and they call, and there's a guy, there's somebody in there, and clearly not the owner, that's trespass. Wasn't he arrested? I mean, what would the difference be having that or not having that to deal with somebody like that?
I'm going to defer to Police Chief Moore.
Good evening, Council. Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. It depends on the situation. We have to, we have to know who the victim is, and we have to have a willing victim as well. Because someone's in a property, we're going to check out the story that they have or the reason that they're there. Sometimes it's a difficult situation for our officers, especially with absentee owners or owners that don't live here. So, I'm, I'm not familiar with that particular situation, so I don't want to tell you. I can, I can guess that the officers investigated, talked to the person. If they felt they had probable cause to arrest him, they would have done it, and if they didn't, they, they'd be forced to let him go.
Let him go, but get him out of the house, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Gary?
City Councilor, my name is Gary Kadats. I live at 3797 June Avenue, Salem, Oregon. I talked to Mr. Rogers earlier today, and he said they took a 20 or a 60-yard thing of garbage out of that house that he's talking about. A wonderful situation. Now, the City of Salem's cleaned it up. It's still a garbage pit. Everybody that goes by there thinks it's a dump. People have said, why don't they burn that place down? Why don't they use it as a controlled burn? Why don't they bring a bulldozer in there and mow it down? He's saying how wonderful the situation is down there. I don't know if he's driven by there, but his eyes are bad, if he has. Something, something needs to be done with that. I've got a printout here of some houses on Coral that have like 15 cars in the backyard. They've got garbage everywhere. One of them is 2077 Coral, and the other is 2047. I don't know how they get this bad before something is done with them. I mean, if you, if they've got code enforcement officers, why isn't something done with it before it gets to this condition? I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I had a guy tell me the other day. He says, you live in the worst neighborhood in the city. I said, you don't need to tell me, partner, and it didn't used to be like that. It's just getting worse and worse and worse, and they're saying it's getting better, better, better. It's not getting better. People need to drive around and look at it. Thank you. I don't know if any, if Mr. Hoy would like to look at this overhead view of the houses.
Sure. Okay, no, okay. Joyce Judy.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Joyce Judy, and I now live in Ward 2. And first, I would like to thank the city councilors and staff for the hard work they've been doing on our water crisis. It's, it was a little hiccup in the beginning, but you guys seem to have it under control now. I'm here tonight to speak against the suggestion that we have hard liquor in our city parks. I don't see any good reason for having hard liquor in our city parks. In fact, I don't even see any good reason to have liquor in our parks, but that's another story. I know they say, well, some people prefer hard liquor. Well, some people prefer not to have anything, and so why should one person's preference be overriding everybody else's preference? I drink hard liquor. I drink beer. I drink wine, but I don't need to drink it in my city parks where there are families and children. There's greater risk here that you're going to increase the possibility of alcoholism because one gets drunk quicker on hard liquor than they do on beer or wine. And so, you are creating a potential for violence in our parks, for, you know, riots or whatever, or even accidents in our parks, or accidents on the road as a result of alcohol. So, I would strongly urge that the city not vote in favor of this hard liquor, and I see it only as a profit motive on the part of a few people. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you for coming down, Ms. Judy. Since there is a public hearing tonight on that issue, I presume you would like your comments made at this item, part of the agenda item, to also be included as part of the public hearing.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is it for public comment. Does anybody else want to address the city council on anything other than the public hearings? Okay, moving along. Counselor Nanki, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar.
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Hoy to approve this consent calendar. To your motion, Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, we have a couple of things on the consent calendar this evening. We have the draft minutes from the May 29 meeting. We have two resolutions, one, again, amending the city's public contracting rules, and then a resolution on fees and charges for services. We also have two action items, one being an intergovernmental agreement with Schmeckin Community College for cooperative regional library services, and then a intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for right-of-way services on the Brown Road corridor improvement project.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to just briefly talk about 3.2B, which is the fees and charges for services. I had an extensive conversation today with Director Wright and Budget Director Kelly about this, and it's quite a long, long item, and it's quite interesting in terms of how those figures are arrived at, and it's too complicated to discuss as part of a consent calendar, but I would like to suggest that this might be a good idea at some point in the future to have a council work session to discuss this. I know one of the issues is how much of the actual city staff time should be related to the charges, and right now, it's about a 50%, going up to maybe 60% recovery, and should it be more, should it be less? I think this also dovetails in with the city revenue committee that will, if it hasn't started, it will be starting. So, I'm talking to the city manager now, and that it might be a good idea to have a discussion, some sort of a work session to further discuss these fees before we have to adopt them for the next year. I think they're fine for this year.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to comment on 3.3B, and that's the IGA with the ODOT to start the right-of-way acquisition process on Brown Road. I'm very pleased to see this moving forward. I know the neighbors in NOLA are very eager to get this project finished. I'm really happy to see this on the, on the consent calendar, so I just wanted to thank staff for their work on that.
Good, thank you. Anything else? Okay, we've got a motion to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Nope. No, nobody opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. So, we're now at a public hearings.
The city council will now hold a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 6719 Devon Avenue Southeast and withdrawal of the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to 10 minutes. Applicable neighborhood association is limited to five minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes. And the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony, limited to issues raised during the public testimony. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, Planner with Community Development, and tonight I'm presenting the staff report for, Amy, could you get that up there? Great. For annexation case number C 725 for property at 6719 Devon Avenue Southeast. So, I'd like to introduce this report, the attachments and presentation, into the record. The annexation territory is contiguous to city limits on its north boundary. It's a territory of 20.35 acres, and that includes .61 acres of right-of-way on Devon Avenue Southeast. The future alignment of Lone Oak Road is mapped at the western boundary of the territory, and the urban growth boundary is just along Reese Hill Road south of the territory. The territory is one parcel. It includes one single-family dwelling. The owner is HSF Development LLC. The members are Chris Yount, Anthony Kreutzberg, and Kelly Hamilton. They signed the annexation petition, and because the property is contiguous, annexation is required to obtain city services for future development. The annexation territory is designated developing residential in our comprehensive plan, as are all the abutting and adjacent properties. The adjacent properties, some are zoned RA, residential agriculture, and some are RS, single-family residential. When an RA-zoned property is subdivided, it automatically is rezoned as single-family residential or RS. The annexation applicants are proposing RS zoning for the territory, and that's consistent with its designation in the comprehensive plan. The applicants have a concurrent application in for an urban growth area preliminary declaration or UGA. This is not required for the annexation prior to the annexation or with it. It would be required prior to or with any application for a subdivision. And you may have seen this on your agenda before. We had an appeal of the UGA decision by the applicant with objections to some of the conditions related to parks requirements. Prior to the appeal hearing that was scheduled for May 29, staff, we withdrew that decision for the UGA, and you will be seeing a modified UGA soon. Because the property owners signed the annexation petition, House, or sorry, Senate Bill 1573, which is adopted in 2016, allows the annexation to go through with the council hearing, and it would not have to be submitted to the voters for approval. It's also within the urban growth boundary, subject to the comprehensive plan and contiguous to city limits, so it meets the requirements for the exemption from the voter approval. And although it may not be referred to the voters, according to the state law, council still retains the authority on whether to annex the territory. Staff found that the proposed annexation met the annexation criteria, including whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals. It allows orderly, efficient, and timely provision of urban services and serves the public interest. Therefore, we're recommending that council find that the petitioner signed a valid petition, determine that the annexation satisfies the criteria, adopt Order 201803 ANX, apply City of Salem's single-family residential zoning, and withdraw the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait on questions for staff, and we'll have the applicant come up next and testify.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Members of the council, my name is Mark Grins with Multitec Engineering. Excuse me. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast here in Salem. I'm representing the petitioners in this matter before you this evening. The staff report was pretty straightforward in what this is, property's inside the urban growth boundary. The city's the logical provider of urban services within the urban growth boundary, so we're requesting for, for this property to be annexed. Council just recently completed the establishment of the Lone Oak Reimbursement District. This piece of property is a significant portion, property that's necessary to be a participant in order for Lone Oak to be extended south to make that connection to Reese Hill Road in order to help begin to, to provide that transportation link between Reese Hill and Mildred Lane with Lone Oak. So, we think it's a good time for this property to be coming in and for development to start to happen. So, annexation is critical for that path, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have of us.
Any questions for Mr. Grins? Nope? Thank you. Okay, we have any still, maybe signed up if they're here, right? We have nobody from the Neighborhood Association present? Anybody else want to speak to this issue? Nobody signed up? Okay, then I don't think you need a rebuttal there, Mark. So, questions of staff? See none?
We encourage a no rebuttal.
I'll close the hearing.
Do you want to make it since it's your board, or?
You can make it.
Okay, I would move staff recommendation as provided.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Nanki, seconded by Councilor Lewis to approve the staff recommendation. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The city council will now hold a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 1338 and 1340 Wallace Road Northwest and withdrawal of the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant's limited to 10 minutes. Applicable neighborhood association is limited to five minutes. Other interested parties, limited to three minutes. And the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony, limited to issues raised during public testimony. Again, a red, a yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Staff rec, go ahead, Pamela.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, presenting the staff report for annexation case number 724 for territory at 1338 and 1340 Wallace Road Northwest and Land East. I request that this staff report, attachments, and presentation be entered into the record. This is a territory of approximately .8 acres, contiguous to city limits on the east, south, and west. The future alignment of Fifth Avenue Northwest in orange and the urban growth boundary in black are east of the territory, but not contiguous to the territory. We also show the future alignment of Marine Drive that's even further east. The territory includes three parcels and two single-family dwellings and some accessory buildings. The owner is Stonewell LLC, Nathan Quarry and Kenneth Birdwell. They signed the annexation petition. Because the property is contiguous to city limits, the annexation is required to obtain city services for future development. So, I found something interesting when I was doing research on this one for their pre-application conference. The city maps had been showing this property as multifamily in the comp plan for quite a while. That was the electronic maps. When I was researching other cases in that area, I found no evidence that this property was ever changed from developing residential, which was the designation on the old paper maps, to multifamily. Therefore, the applicant is submitting this application to change that to multifamily to be consistent with the nearby properties. As you can see, it's surrounded by other multifamily residential designated properties, and I found it's actually the only developing residential property on that east side of Wallace that has frontage on Wallace until you get all the way up to the northern city limits, north of Salem Town. So, this property is under common ownership with the L-shaped property that wraps around it on the east and the south, and it's likely to be developed with that property. Therefore, the petitioner is requesting the same designation, so multifamily comp plan and RM2 in the zoning. You can see also the other properties that are south of that, that have apartment developments now are also zoned RM2. As with the previous example, this one would be exempt from voter approval because the owners of the territory submitted the petition. It's in the UGB urban growth boundary, subject to comprehensive plan and contiguous to city limits, and council retains the authority on whether to approve it for annexation. The comprehensive plan and state goals, public services, and public interest criteria also apply to this case. There is a little bit of a different applicability there for land use designations. In this case, because they're asking for changes from what would be the automatic designation according to the annexation chapter based on the developing residential and suburban residential in Polk County, we do have a little bit more to look at. So, for the land use designations, the Planning Commission evaluated the applicant's submission and testimony that were received at the Planning Commission hearing on the designations, which did include some concerns regarding traffic. They did find that the application met the criteria for the land use designation, so they've recommended that council approve the changes. And you'll find the staff report and findings and their recommendation in the packet. We received one comment from West Salem Neighborhood Association saying that they support the approval of the applications, and they have not received any other comments on the annexation portion of the application. So, therefore, we're recommending that council find the petitioner, sign the petition, and that it's valid, determine that the annexation satisfies the criteria, adopt Order 201802 ANX, change the comprehensive plan from developing residential to multifamily residential, change the zoning from Polk County Suburban Residential to city RM2 multiple-family residential 2, and withdraw the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Thank you. We'll hold questions of staff till after. We hear testimony? So, we've got Natalie Jenny. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Natalie Jenny. I'm with Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast in Salem. I'm here representing the applicant for his property. Because the property is already located within the UGB, it has already been decided that the city will be the logical provider for the city's services. In addition, we already have a need for the current residences at the property to have water and sewer extended to the property as the septic is failing for the existing homes and the residents in it. And we've already completed the zone changes Pamela mentioned to make sure that the property and the new RM2 designation is consistent with the zones of the property surrounding it. We appreciate all of staff's work on the application, and we agree with their staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No? Thank you. And that's it. We have nobody from the Neighborhood Association, although they've indicated their approval. Anybody else want to speak to this? Nobody, and so we don't need a rebuttal? Questions of staff? Hearing that. I will close this hearing. Close the hearing? And who's this? Councilor Nanki?
Yes, since Commissioner Kizer is not here, I will move staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Nanki, seconded by Councilor Lewis to approve the staff recommendation. Anyone want to speak to that? Councilor Nanki?
Yep, pretty cut and dry.
Okay. We've got a motion to approve the staff recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The city council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Hey, Kelly?
Thank you. Kelly Jacobs again, the city's budget officer. So, to receive state revenue sharing funds, the city is required to hold two public hearings. The first public hearing to discuss the possible uses of state revenue sharing funds was held by the Budget Committee on May 2, 2018. This evening's public hearing, which covers the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds, was noticed in the State's Journal on May 31, 2018. The proposed use of state revenue sharing funds in the amount of $1,776,830 as recommended by the Budget Committee is an offset to the costs of providing police patrol services. City council approval of this proposed use is signified by adoption of Resolution 201828. Thank you.
Okay, we'll hold questions of staff after public test, or public comments. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on this? Nobody's signed up? Okay. Questions of staff? Hearing that? Close this hearing? Councilor Nanki?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Nanki, seconded by Councilor Ossec to approve the staff recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
The city council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the fiscal year 2019 City of Salem budget. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Kelly Jacobs again. Oregon public budget law requires the Budget Committee to recommend a budget to the city council, which it did on May 9, 2018. Changes made by the Budget Committee to the city manager's proposed budget are provided as Attachment 1 to the public hearing staff report and through a supplemental information report on the addition's agenda. The Budget Committee's fund-level recommended budget appears as Attachment 2 to this staff report. The city council is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. Notice of this evening's public hearing was published in the State's Journal on May 31, 2018. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the city council deliberate on the recommended budget within the restrictions provided in law, which are: property taxes cannot be increased from the rate levied by the Budget Committee, and no funds expenditures can be increased by more than 10%. Within these restrictions, the city council may make changes to the recommended budget. Following deliberation of the budget, the city council is asked to approve any changes to the budget this evening to allow staff to return with a resolution to adopt the budget on June 25, 2018. At that time, staff will ask the city council to amend the budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from 2018 which staff are currently identifying, as well as any other appropriation needs that were not identified during the budget review process but may remain within the 10% cap prescribed in budget law. A complete list of items to be included in the fiscal year 2019 budget will be provided to the city council with the agenda packet for the June 25, 2018 meeting.
We'll hold questions of staff till after public comment? We'll hold questions of staff till after public comment. And we have somebody here, Ron Sterba. He's got show and tell here, fans.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, city councilors and city staff. Ron Sterba, 3424 25th Street Southeast, Ward 2. A board member of CIPCA Neighborhood Association, which encompasses a good portion of southeast Salem. I'm here tonight to talk with you. And you thought I was going to talk about streetlights. By the way, they look great, and the color is the perfect color. Got an idea from our Neighborhood Association, coupled with CIPCA, Cessna, SWAN, NEN, two walking groups here in Salem, Willamette Wanderers and Salem Kaiser Walkers. And what this is... Now let me get this out of here. Oh, this is heavy. Is a project we've been working on in our Neighborhood Association, trying to link up the Neighborhood Associations in the southeast Salem. What's it called? The project is called Missing Link. The missing link. Get the missing link put together.
You better get going, or you're going to run out of time.
Together. What am I talking about? I'm talking about a project here in Salem that was once completed, has been completed, and that is 25th and Madrona Southeast. The street was rebuilt. There's new sidewalks, 10 feet wide, pedestrian paths. The new plans are already in place for McGill Crest down to 25th from Pringle with sidewalks. But the project that's missing is the sidewalks between Madrona and McGill Crest. You put in large buildings. Can you imagine a large building being built without doors? You have all the product inside and services, but the people can't get into work? Well, that's what this missing sidewalk pedestrian path along the east side of 25th Street is, and that's to connect our communities. When this missing link is put in from Madrona to Mission Street...
You're going to have to wind her up.
Does the Neighborhood Association get five minutes?
Not... Nope, this is just a public hearing. You don't... You've got three.
Okay. I'll make it quick. The missing link is the missing sidewalk. We need a bicycle pedestrian path between Madrona and Mission to connect our neighborhoods.
Okay, you've got questions. Councilor Cook.
Thank you. So what will happen when this missing link is put in?
What will happen? What will happen is the people who, and I have witnessed, walk in the street on 25th with suitcases, baby buggies, and bicycles. And people have come to me, "Are you crazy? I never ride my bike on 25th Street over by the airport." And so there is room next to those beautiful line trees along the east side of 25th that put a pedestrian bike path that matches the sidewalk at 25th and Madrona, which is 8 to 10 feet wide because of ADA requirements. And we'd like to see that extended all the way to Mission. This way, you can go to Cascade Lakes Park. It connects the Neighborhood Associations to the northeast to the new park there by Walling's Pond and the new improvements. So this is a missing link, and I really would like to see it put in the budget because we have to connect our neighborhoods, and this is a missing link. I wish all the Neighborhood Associations would refer to parts of their neighborhood as a missing link. And let's connect our neighborhoods. We just can't build spots and put the people in the streets. Thank you very much.
Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Sterba. I'm in those neighborhood groups, or most of those are my ward, and some Councilor Nanki's as well. This continually comes up, and I have to say, I was out there on business the other day in my city bike, not my road bike. I had to go to the Spinnaker Point Building there. And so I know we're getting something done on McGill Crest when we come in, and that was a horrible street to ride one's bike on, and 25th is the same. So I'm just wondering, Director Fan-Fernandez, if you could just... I'm not asking about budgetary, because in my view, it's too late to stick it in now, but what are the plans for that missing link? And is it in the transportation plan, and how does it fit?
Sure. Mr. Sterba is visionary, because we actually have that project in the plan, and we agree with him that this is a very important project. We estimate that it's about a $2.5 million project. We have included it in the applications that went to the Oregon Department of Transportation or the arts program. You'll recall that last council meeting, we asked you to approve that we just submit grants, and that's one of the projects that we felt was important enough to apply for, that it met the criteria. So if we get the grant, if we're awarded that, council will see the intergovernmental agreement come through for the project. So that's what we're... There's no funding source today. That's the funding source that we are attempting to get. We did put in for it, I think, two years ago when the arts grant program came through. It did not... It was not awarded money at that time. So at this point, until another bond issue arrives, and that's really where money would come from, we will continue to look for those kinds of opportunities to fund the project. We agree with Mr. Sterba that this is an important project.
Thank you very much. Do we know when we're going to hear on the arts proposal?
I don't think Julie Warnicki is sitting behind me. It is within a few months we will hear.
And would I be correct in thinking that the improvements that were done on 25th there by the airport, I forget the Cross Street, Madrona, those may give a further enhancement to the need, because now we've connected another part of that link, and now we... It really is a missing link.
Certainly. And the connection to... The point is well-made, that to be able to connect the improvements that we've made on Madrona, the Madrona 25th intersection to 25th and the upcoming McGill Crest connections, improvements down at Pringle. I mean, there's a number of improvements that we agree, that the more connectivity we have for pets and bikes, the better it will be. It's just $2.5 million that we just don't have right at the moment.
Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In that light, with the Sustentable Fairview property, we actually spent bond money to improve that 25th curve into Madrona, as well as Fred Meyer's is doing the right-hand turn lane at Commercial, they were supposed to. Could we use that development fee?
Perhaps.
In the event we aren't successful in the...
Yeah, perhaps. Perhaps we could, yes. That is ultimately a council decision. That link was not a part of the original development district fee list, but you're absolutely right, Councilor Nanki. Madrona 25th has been completed. Fred Meyer is doing the right turn lane at Madrona and Commercial Street. A lot of the other projects have been completed, so that is an opportunity.
Yeah, because now that we've actually completed the curve, the end of the sidewalk at that curve goes nowhere, and so it would be a logical extension of that project.
That would be... I had not thought of that. That is an excellent suggestion.
There we go. Thank you. And thank you for probably the most well-prepared presentation I've seen in a long time here.
Thank you, city council and city staff. By the way, this is pretty light, actually.
We assumed that.
I have to point across, thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else want to testify on this? No? Questions of staff? Yeah, I'll close the hearing. Councilor Nanki?
I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
Councilor Nanki has moved the staff recommendation, seconded by Councilor Ossec. Any discussion?
Just that we had a good budget committee season this year. Looking forward to some more changes as we move into next year with priority-based budgeting as well. And I know there may be some other hands here that want to tweak possibly slightly based on some other communications we had today, so I'll leave my comments at that.
Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. I may be that person. I agree with Councilor Nanki about the budgetary process, but I have an amendment, and I can't read my own writing, so Kelly, I'm looking at you here. I move to amend the transportation something.
Services fund.
Services fund. I was reading sources, and I knew that was wrong. I move to amend the transportation services fund budget with an expenditure increase of $50,000 to place speed humps on the Winter Maple Greenway project and to decrease the ending working capital by the same amount.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Councilor Anderson to amend the transportation budget by $50,000 and seconded by Councilor Cook. Discussion.
Thank you. I am making this motion on behalf of Councilor Kizer, who's awarded it and who was not able to be here today, but I would have seconded it or made it myself. We had quite a discussion about this when we approved the Winter Maple Greenway, and the discussion centered around what to do up by the school for the deaf with respect to the speed humps, and then it also centered around stop signs at various spots throughout that. And after an extensive discussion, the council then voted 7 to 2 to amend the Winter Maple Greenway project to include the stop signs and to include the speed humps. So I think that's pretty well clearly shown that that's the will of the council. I do know that the same motion was made at the Budget Committee, and it was defeated, not necessarily by the council members, but by the budget members, who all committee members who have a vote then. So I think the will of the council was pretty well expressed when we discussed this to begin with, so I think it's appropriate to do so now. I would also add that the cost was estimated between $30,000 and $50,000, so whatever is spent that is less than $50,000 will be a carryover to the next budget cycle.
Any other discussion? Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was one of the two originally, but it was more so because we expanded that staff recommendation actually decreased the speed limit down to 20 as well, which I thought was extreme, especially if now we're putting in speed humps, which will actually force that slowdown to happen. But the concern with the stop signs, such that traffic doesn't typically obey the speed limit signs as it is, and once you know that nobody can come at you from the sides, would tend to increase that. And so I would be supportive of adding those speed humps in to slow them back down. That being said, I know we've gotten a couple of emails recently from some other neighbors who would like speed humps, and sometimes the city pays for them, and sometimes people have to pay for them themselves, would be the concern as to how we go forth and deal with other speed humps that residents would like to see in their neighborhoods to slow some of that other traffic down around town as well.
Councilor Anderson.
Just thank you, Councilor Nanki, for your support, and now I understand the reasoning. I just would add that part of the things when we talked about introducing stop signs and speed humps is what's going to happen if other neighborhood groups start to want this? And I think that to speak to Councilor Nanki's concern, I do not believe this will be setting a precedent, because we are doing this because it is a bike way, not just a standard street. So, you know, I don't think... I think that if other neighborhood groups come and says, "We want this, we want that", well, and you did it over here, we would say we did there, because we have a designated bike path greenway, that makes a difference.
Councilor Lewis.
I was the other person that voted against increasing the Maple Winter Bike Way to the Greenway, and I stand by those statements. But once the council has spoken, it just doesn't make sense to me to not spend the money to finish this project. The sooner that we can get this done, the more we can see what effect it will have on Salem, both positive and negative. So I will support the motion.
Anyone else? Hey, Steve Dunn? The amendment, that's right. All those who are in favor of the amendment by Councilor Anderson to increase the transportation budget by $50,000 who have put in speed humps and bumps on the Maple Bike Way, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, now we're to the... Now we're back to the main motion. Any more comment? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve the 2019 City of Salem budget is amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? And we move on.
The city council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the proposed changes to Salem Revise Code Chapter 94 to allow sales of alcoholic beverages with 14% or more alcohol by volume at Riverfront Park and Bush's Pasture Park. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Good evening, councilors and Mayor Pro Tem. My name's Patricia Farrell. I'm the Public Works, Parks and Natural Resources Planning Manager, and I care to give you a brief overview of the proposed changes to Salem Revise Code Chapter 94 to allow permitting of restricted concessionaire sales of alcoholic beverages with 14% or more alcohol by volume at Riverfront and Bush's Pasture Park. There are no other changes proposed to the current regulations regarding alcohol in the parks. On March 12, council asked staff to look at several questions related to the current policies that we have in our parks regarding alcohol, also Oregon Liquor Control Commission OLCC requirements, and then also to look at other jurisdictions and how they apply policies related to alcohol in parks. So answers to those questions are summarized in the staff report that you have received. The Salem Police Department also conducted an analysis of alcohol-related incidents in the downtown area for the past five years during times of special events at Riverfront Park. That information is shown on pages eight and nine in your staff report. The conclusion was that increasing the alcohol by volume for OLCC licensed events is unlikely to result in an increase in alcohol-related incidents. Input was also sought from Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Due to the timing of this hearing prior to their June 14 meeting, they were not able to vote as a board. However, they did respond as individuals to the proposal. Five members endorsed the proposal, one opposed, one had no comment, and one did not reply. One member who endorsed the proposal voiced a concern about the number of consecutive days where hard liquor could be sold, suggesting that they be limited to one week or less. In conclusion, the proposed change to SRC 94 will only apply to city permitted and OLCC licensed public events and concessionaires at Riverfront and Bush's Pasture Parks. Therefore, staff recommends amending SRC 94 to allow a limited expansion of the current alcohol in parks policy. So this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions, and we also have Lieutenant Upkeys and Chief Moore here for any other questions.
Okay, we'll hold questions till after public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and councilors. My name's Casia Quillanen. I am here today in my individual capacity and not as a representative of the Parks Board, but I do have some acquaintance with this particular issue. So what I would like to say is this: I personally am uncomfortable with increasing the alcohol limit in our public parks. Having said that, I also realize that looking at the criteria and the restrictions that are imposed in this, they're pretty... are imposed in this, there's pretty much not much we can do about it, in the sense that there's not a legal basis to object to increasing the degree of, the amount of alcohol served in public parks. What I would suggest, though, is because the, increasing the alcohol percentage is so drastic from a glass of wine to a hard alcohol, that instead of making this ordinance permanent at this point, give it a trial. Make it a year's trial, and see how it works. See if there is actually any changes. And I am mindful that the police department has said that based upon the alcohol content that we have now, there have been very few actual alcohol-related events. There will always be some, because there are always people who will abuse alcohol no matter what. No, and so what I'm saying is, instead of making this something that's going to be permanent, give it a year, see whether we have any changes in the data at the end of that time, and then revisit it at that point. We may have a different view of it in a year.
Okay.
And that was also my comment that I made, but didn't make it into the staff report, but my comment was not as clear as it could have been. Thanks.
Questions? Thank you, Cassia. So, does anybody else want to address the council? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Apostle Paul Young, pastor of Word of Life Fellowship Church out in 4705 Portland Road Northeast. Yeah, you can make it legal, but making it legal doesn't necessarily mean that it's right. I think we need to look at unintended consequences. We just had a gentleman earlier tonight talking about streetlights. Now, I don't know if that research is right or not, whether LED lights cause these problems, probably take quite a few years to figure that out. But nobody put those lights up thinking they will cause some kind of problem. When we deal with alcohol, I've been in the ministry for 43 years, and 30 of them here in Salem. I have dealt with many, many cases of tragedy, loss, pain, suffering from alcohol-related crashes, wrecks, family, you name it. So I speak from experience. If you increase the alcohol content that is available at these parks, it is only a matter of time until there will be an accident. There will be a result, although unintended, but it will happen. I don't know if it'll happen this year, next year, two years, five years, I don't know. But the bottom line is, I don't want to have to deal with that. I don't want to have to look in the faces of family members that lost a loved one, that lost a child, or something because of an alcohol-related accident. We already have enough of that. Increasing the alcohol that is available in our parks will eventually lead there. It, you just, you know that's true, because it's true anyway. So we have a choice. We have a choice. Yeah, we can make this legal, but I urge you to make the choice that is right. Do not approve this measure. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else want to address the council? You already have, yes. Okay, then we will, questions to the staff? Counselor Cook.
So, my question, Ms. Farrell, you said that there was no significant impact for the parks to be able to introduce hard liquor at these two parks for this event? Is that correct?
Are you talking about the police study that was done?
I'm talking about parks, park staff.
Oh, so it would not affect, it would not increase park staff work, because essentially at these events, alcohol is already allowed, and the vendor is the one responsible for the security and the defining the licensed area and obtaining the permits and things like that.
So I'm to understand that your park staff already handle all of the needs of the park, and that there's no additional needs at the park. So next year, if you come with a need for staffing, there wouldn't be that need based on these events. There would be no increased staffing needed for parks.
Well, at the current level of events, that would be true. If suddenly we get an increase of people proposing large events for this type, then there would be some additional need, I would think, but it's hard to predict what, how many events we will have in any given year. It's been fairly stable over the last few years, though.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell, Bush's Pasture Park is in my ward, and I live less than a half block away from it, and the, the, the only event that would be affected by this is the Salem Art Fair.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. If you were a witness, I would say you have to say yes or no, or let the record reflect that the witness was nodding your head up and down. So I live there, and I go to the fair almost every day, and when I go there, there is a cordoned-off area where the beer and wine is allowed to be served. That cannot go outside of that cordoned-off area, can it?
That's correct, and under the OLCC rules, you have to have a cordoned-off area. Now, it does depend on the event. You can have an interior, you know, beer garden type of area, or you can have like the Bite and Brew where the whole area is cordoned off.
Yes, but, but whatever alcohol is there, whether it's wine, or spirits, or beer, it can't go outside that cordoned-off area, whatever it is.
Correct.
So if this law passes, we're not going to have somebody walking down the main path of the art fair with a bottle of liquor hanging from his pants, are we?
No.
And just like right now, we can't have that with beer.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cook.
Just a point of clarification. According to the requirements for OLCC, there would be sales of alcohol for consumption off-site that would be listed. So for instance, if you were selling a spirit or a hard cider that had a higher percentage of 14% alcohol, you could in fact buy a bottle to take off-site. This ordinance does address that. And where you consume it and how would be up to your own personal decision and the enforcement pieces that are in place. But it does allow for sales of the liquor off-site, not open container. We do have open container laws, this isn't Bourbon Street, but you can have a sale, it says on page six, sale for off-site use.
It would just have to be a closed container, or for instance, a growler at a, at a beer type of event can be taken off-site.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, I would ask again to make sure I understand, this is for only two parks, right?
That's correct.
It's for Riverfront and Bush's Pasture.
Yes.
Those are the only two.
Yes.
So all the other parks, this doesn't go for any of the other parks in the city?
Doesn't change the existing rules there.
Yeah. Counselor Cook, then Counselor Lewis.
In the staff report, you referred to the Kaiser Iris Festival. Was that something that you researched for the staff report, for Kaiser Iris Fest?
Robert Chandler might have researched that.
All right, is someone here to, is Robert here?
No.
Okay. It's my understanding in researching this further, that although there is liquor sold at the Kaiser Iris Fest, it is in fact not on city property in Kaiser, but it's both at the Rotary and at the Lions Hall, and that those organizations are responsible. When hard liquor is sold at the Heritage Center, it's for private events, not public events for the licensing fee. Just to add that point of clarification for the record, can we have staff research that, or?
I think what Mr. Chandler did here is simply sent out a request for cities to respond to a survey. Mr. Chandler's out of the country, so that's why, that's why he's not here this evening. And so I think the responses that you see here under seven were simply their responses. So I don't think we did, I'm not aware that Mr. Chandler did any research himself, but simply got responses from cities just to give the council a flavor of what's going on in, in surrounding communities, and that's what you see there in response to number seven.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you. Just a further point of clarification, for the World Beat allowing the sales of alcohol from 2017, World Beat 2018 has not occurred yet. That's correct?
Correct.
So we're still looking at a single point of data to be able to confer that pattern in this case for a large park like Riverfront Park with large amount of attendees. It says 15,000 estimated total attendees per year at World Beat. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's just, just one year that they began serving alcohol.
Okay, so I would just like to point out that one point of data does not a pattern make, just so that we're clear on that as well. It is interesting and compelling, and it's good to have this conversation, but I think we need to use caution when inferring what could happen just based on a single year.
Okay, other questions? Counselor Anderson.
This is directed toward the city attorney. We had an email from Britta Franz talking about reviewing untoward effects after the summer, and then Ms. Quillanen said, she didn't say the words, but sort of a sunset sort of provision. To do something like that, would the proposal have to be amended, or could we just in comments to the city staff say, "We need to review this matter after the summer season or after a year, and we would like you to come back with a report"?
Either way would work fine, Counselor. You could, Mr. Powers can, you know, let you know that he will bring it back, or you could amend the ordinance.
Then before we get to the vote, I'm going to request, I don't want to amend it, but I will request that the city manager come back with a review. I think after one year would be appropriate, because there's going to be some winter use at, at Riverfront Park, so I would very much like a review along the statistical lines and the matters that Ms. Cook and others has been saying to say, gee, we've seen a big increase, or we really haven't seen much.
Counselor Cook.
I do have a question of Chief Moore. Thank you, Chief, for coming down to the podium. I was interested in reading the report that you showed there was no significant impact for whether or not World Beat had alcohol or did not on your effective officers. And it got me thinking about the traffic complaints that were mentioned earlier with the speed bumps. Quite frequently in the neighborhood associations, what we hear is, "We don't have enough officers to be able to have that proactive enforcement for speeding. We can't be everywhere at once." And it got me thinking, you can't be everywhere at once. We've got this policy to put that burden of proof on whoever pulls the permit for them to be able to circulate in the crowd, but I understand that you have no additional need for officers? So next year, if you were to come and say, "I need additional officers," we would say, "But look, you have this report where, because the Oregon Beverage Association said that maybe we should have hard liquor at our parks, that doesn't impact us as a police service."
Thank you, Counselor Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. I'm not going to guarantee you I won't come back next year asking for more police officers. I just want to make that straight. Over the past five, six, seven years, however long it's been, we have worked the events in the downtown parks in a variety of ways. On some occasions, we have adjusted the, our street crimes unit, for instance, to be available on weekends. We've assigned our downtown team. Sometimes we've had as many as eight people work in the events. Sometimes we've had just a couple downtown officers. So we've, we've done it a whole bunch of different ways. When we adjust a team to work an event, of course, it takes them away from their, their normal duties for, for those days that we do that. I will tell you, and as the information in the report shows, we've had very few alcohol-related calls inside of the events. So for me to tell you I would probably need more officers to work them, I'm not sure how, how that would go, and perhaps we would have, have to wait and see. I can tell you, the information you have shows events, alcohol events that occurred during the weekends of the World Beat or the Bite, but it was about an 18-block radius from Water Street to High Street, which encompasses every one of the liquor establishments and bars that are in the downtown area. We've actually had more offenses in the parks over the years during the World Beat Festival than we have had during the Bite. And those, those alcohol events were not, we don't believe they were associated with the World Beat Festival. They were associated with maybe people outside the festival in the parks drinking, and our officers happened to come across it, so.
Absolutely, and this isn't about mischaracterizing use of legal substances. As you know, marijuana is a legal substance. Alcohol is a legal substance, both for people over the age of 21. I can see that it'll be the blunt, the bite and the brew next year, if, if that's what we want to do, but I know that we also have a smoke-free parks policy in place that protects against tobacco use and also vaping. And I know that was quite controversial, I wasn't on council, but when it was passed as far as how that would affect people, and I haven't had anyone emailing me or banging down my door that I can't smoke in the park, or I can't vape in the park, because there's still private sites for them to do this. As far as alcohol and the effect of it in our overall community, when you did this report, it was just within those parks. Have you seen an increase in the community in general as far as the effect of alcohol with, I had asked for DUIs, I was thinking of the pedestrian deaths that we've had. Can you speak to that at all?
I'm sorry, I don't have that, I don't have that information available. Drugs and alcohol fuel a great many of our calls, I will tell you that. I don't think that's, that's a secret. Those people that are affected by substances, they create issue for law enforcement, but I can't specifically respond to whether we have more DUIs during these events or not. I don't have that information available to me.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, any other comments? I would weigh in a little bit here. You know, I, this is, goes back to what I did for a living before I retired, certainly with a restaurant association, and it's, it's my experience, you get better results from folks that do this for a living. In this case, the people that have come to us and asked for this, you know, for the hard alcohol to be included, do this for a living. They know, they know they're trained, they know what to look for, they do it on an annual weekly basis, probably in the summer, and you can see from, from the results we've gotten here from the little survey that the study we received from the police, that there's almost no incidents. And in fact, you could argue there might, probably wasn't any in the, if it's an 18-block area. That's, we got a lot of bars downtown that could have caused that problem rather than the Bite that night. So I'm more confident in dealing with this when it's so specific, it's not, it's in just a small number of events. They're in two parks, by a proven vendor that knows what he's doing, and knows what they're doing, and how to deal with this, and how to watch and, and apply the liquor laws that they need to stay in business. So all that being said, I'm going to support this. I think it's, I just think if we're going to allow, sell of alcohol in a park, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to not include this. There's no reason to say no. And I see what we got. We got everybody up here now. Okay, good. Counselor Anderson, Nanki, Hoy and Cook.
Well, I'm going to move the staff recommendation, because pretty much we've moved from, from, can we close the public hearing? I moved we close the public hearing, because we're talking, we're now, we're talking the substance of the bill, not questions of staff anymore.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay.
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
Yes, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Lewis, to move the staff recommendation to your, to your motion.
Well, I've already discussed it. I think many of the councilors have already discussed their opinions in questioning. The only thing I would add- their opinions in questioning. The only thing I would add is that I would urge, and I saw the city manager making a note, I would love to see something come back to us in the spring of next year saying, "We've done another survey, and we don't see much difference." Oh, we see a huge difference. And if we do, then we can revisit the whole ordinance again.
Okay, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My point exactly, we could rescind it rather than put a sunset inside of something. And that being said, the operator or vendor will still have to monitor people that are inside of whatever designated area there is. So it's not like, even though the concentration is higher on spirits and hard alcohol, you're not going to get a pint of it. So you'll be essentially, if you're a wine drinker, or a beer drinker, or a hard alcohol mixed drink, or shots drinker, you're essentially going to be exposed to the same level of alcohol in your bloodstream before a vendor will not serve you anymore. So it's just going to people's preference. And so I will be supporting the motion.
Okay. Counselor Hoy, do you still want to speak?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very glad that I decided to move this to a public hearing. I think it's been a good discussion. I have to say, in my 16 or so months on the council, I think I've received more feedback on this than most, almost all other issues. There've been a few others that we've gotten more of, but I've gotten a lot of feedback on this particular topic, and almost all of it has been opposed. Most of the people, and I don't know if that's just because of the nature of it, people who are opposed are speaking out, and those who support it or not, I'm not sure why that is, but that's certainly been the flavor of the feedback I've received. I, I'm conflicted on this one. I'm quite certain it's going to pass. I'm probably going to be a no. I'm relieved to hear that we're going to be reviewing it in a year. And so I'd rather not expand alcohol in our parks. I think that it restricts the public's access to our parks. I'd like to see, I'd like to see things that expand access, not restrict access. And I just think from that perspective, although I enjoy spirits myself, I don't think that having them in our park is good public policy.
Thank you. Counselor Cook and Counselor Lewis?
Thank you. So I guess the thing that shocks me the most about this is who's driving the agenda. We've spent a lot of time and energy working on a priority-based budget. We've engaged the public, and not once during this process did someone say, "I'm in the city of Salem, and I have no idea where to get hard liquor. There's not enough places. I feel like I have too many barriers to accessing hard liquor in my community." This process is being driven and rushed through so that it can be affected on this year's Bite and Brew. Now, the issue is, people are in the middle of graduations. They're in the middle of this water issue that's happened. So it isn't on everybody's radar that this is coming up. And I feel like if we delayed this hearing or extended it, we would get much more public testimony. The fact is that the more available a substance is, the fewer barriers that are in place, the more likely you are to see that substance being misused. There are a few things in the staff recommendation, too, that I have a bit of an issue with. Demonstrate adequate supervision of the outdoor area to prevent violation of liquor laws. Now, I've heard my colleagues say, "A drink is a drink is a drink," which was what was referenced in the original request from the individual with Oregon Beverage Association, saying, "Hey, a drink is a drink is a drink. I can get my daily serving of fiber from Benafiber or from a pound of broccoli. They're not the same thing." And if they were the same thing, we wouldn't be here, because OLCC requires different regulations and different licenses for hard liquor. That's why we're here. So I find that argument a bit faulty. Secondly, it does say, "The licensee or permit need may not allow a person to consume or continue to consume alcoholic beverages on the licensed premises after observing that the person is visibly intoxicated." Now, as someone who used to serve liquor, hard liquor, this was a red flag for me. When you take the OLCC license test, there's, they give you the green light, the yellow light, and the red light. Red light is when someone's stumbling, slurring their words, visibly intoxicated. You do not stop serving at red light. You stop serving at yellow when you're a server. So I feel like our policy could be improved in this area. We have no plan for pre-compliance. We're leaving it up to the vendor, which is, in my mind, in conflict with having a priority-based budget, in conflict with the priorities that citizens have talked about this summer. This isn't about demonizing a legal substance. This is not a judgment for people that enjoy spirits or enjoy other substances that are legal. This is about our public parks and how it reflects our values. We have our vision of being a safe and livable capital city with a sustainable economy and environment that's open to all. I find the concept of bringing in increased revenue kind of humorous, because I wonder if this will be enough money to fund a bathroom in either one of these parks that'll stay open 24 hours. I wonder if they'll be open in that budget and the increased revenue to funding speed bumps. And then I look at the comparison. We've gone through something like the Winter Maple Family Friendly Bike Way, where neighbors have said, "We want this. We want it." And we have requests, and hearing, and struggle, and struggle. And then someone says, "Hey, we should allow liquor in parks in two months from now, hard liquor sales." And boom, it's on the agenda, and it goes through no problem. And that just doesn't feel reflective in our community. Also, it says that the sale and service and consumption of alcoholic beverages in the outdoor area are not to, allowed from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, the succeeding calendar day. And I want to know if that actually coincides with bus service. What time bus service will be stopping around those parks? Because transportation is a huge issue, and we heard it during the Uber testimony. My kids are downtown. They call me, and I'm their mom, and I have to go get them because they've been overserved. There's a lot of dependence on a system that may not be the strongest in this case, and it does induce risk. Both of those parks are by state highways, Mission Street, and also the railroad tracks and Front Street. Those are all streets with high amounts of traffic. And I also think of the eclipse. Both of those parks were open during the eclipse, and we heard a lot of concerns from neighbors about how this would affect the livability in their neighborhood. I think that if we're going to do this, we need to have better understanding of it, of the role of the consumption, have a better pre-compliance plan, and we need to make sure that we're not basing this off of a single point of data. So I don't know with your amended sunset clause built in, if we can ask for a delay or an extension, but I don't feel that this reflects the values of our community. And I would just ask you to be mindful of that. I think, you know, being the only person with young kids that's present at this right now, look at what your, what your cultural normative is. You may go to a two-martini lunch. You may enjoy a spirit after dinner. But have you been judged if you have alcohol in your breath and you go to a event? Do you feel that same amount of stigma that someone else in our community that may be marginalized has? There's lots of people in our community that are vulnerable, and that was highlighted during this water situation. I think we need to look at that and view this through an equity lens. These parks are available for everybody, and we want everyone to have fun. There are so many places that you can consume hard liquor in this town, and your private residence is also one of them. I'm not sure opening it up in our public parks is the best idea.
Counselor Lewis?
Well, I understand now why we had prohibition 100 years ago. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to say two things that are conflicting in my mind, but I'll put them out anyway. I enjoy going to rock concerts in parks. And I used to like to go up and get a Coors Light, but you can't do that anymore because now everything is microbrewery. And I don't like microbrewery. And I've never been a wine drinker. And the idea of being able to maybe get a margarita or two while I'm at a rock concert, that's fine with me. I'm not inclined to punish the vast majority of people because, because some cannot, cannot conform to what our community's expectations are. And I recognize that, that for some, it truly is a disease. I have a younger, had a younger sister who died of alcohol disease. And so I don't take these statements lightly. But I believe that we should allow people to be free and responsible, rather than to restrict them because of our fears of what they might do.
Okay. Counselor Cook?
Sorry. Just to speak to your point, Counselor Lewis, I do appreciate you speaking up, and I do think all views are welcome at the table. But this isn't just about individual behavior. This is about the policy that we set as a community. And I think that not only our reputation, but is also the success of the smoke-free parks would show, we have a lot to benefit from creating inclusive communities that value the livability and health of where we live.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick things. If we don't want to let spirits into the parks with that rationale, then we should get rid of beer and wine as well. But that's not the motion that's on the floor today. One could always make that. And then, secondly, in regard to smoke-free parks, they're not. I'm in the parks a lot. People don't even relate to it. I see them vaping and smoking all the time. So Counselor Osek is in the parks a lot as well, and...
Counselor Osek's vaping in the park?
No, he's not. But we meet each other in the parks every now and again.
You guys are meeting each other in the parks?
Yes. We come upon each other as we're moving through the community, interacting with individuals. So, but no.
Wow.
There is, I've seen no decrease in smoking and vaping in the parks, which is probably why you're not getting calls, because a lot of people just don't know. We have a little sign. But that also means that people aren't being encumbered by it, because everybody knows the rules, and they could always contact our law enforcement as well. Likewise, if someone's drinking, I would think that rather than carrying a beer or a bottle of wine through a park, someone might be able to spike a drink. And so hard alcohol may already actually be in the parks.
Actually, if I may, Counselor Protem, you bring up an interesting point. At World Beat, I did receive several contacts from people in my ward. They do not allow you to bring in pre, whether or not it's a water bottle, or even an unopened bottle, you have to purchase all your beverages on-site, which creates a further financial hurdle for our already stressed community, and also begs the question, it is important, if you are drinking for your health, to stay hydrated. If you're drinking in the hot sun at a concert, to stay hydrated. And if you have one margarita, which I will point out to the counselor here that it's actually two servings of alcohol in a one margarita drink, that you'd have to purchase water to be able to stay hydrated. And this accelerates things. It's a catalyst. It's not a bad thing. I'm not arguing for prohibition, although I would welcome your request to bring forward a request for an alcohol-free parks. And that's something that we can engage with, but I would be talking with neighborhoods about that first, and I would be getting that feedback. I think that entertaining this from the vendor point of view leads us astray from our priority-based budget, from our strategic plan that the community pointed out, where they said, "We want to see more events for families. We want to see livability. We want to see healthy communities." And we get, "Oh, wait a second. Let's go ahead and rush this through so we can have it at this event this year."
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Counselor Lewis?
I was going to call for the question.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor to approve the staff recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, raise your hands to those. Counselors Hoy and Cook. Okay, motion passes. We are now to information reports. Information report, we have 6A, Planning Administrative Decision in West Salem. And we also have listing of the purchases approved administratively from April 1st to April 30th. Move to first readings.
Ordinance Bill Number 1018, an ordinance granting a right-of-way use agreement to Exponent Systems, Inc., for placement of wireless facilities in the public rights of way.
Counselor Nanki?
Yes, I would move staff recommendation.
Second?
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Lewis to approve the staff recommendation.
And I would just like to comment that Representative from Exponent's here as well, and was at the Cable Regulatory Commission meeting earlier this afternoon. Thank you for coming.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by singing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. 7-1B.
Ordinance Bill Number 1118, an ordinance relating to changing the name of the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, amending SRC 8.010, 97.010, and 97.900.
Counselor Nanki?
I would move staff recommendation.
Second?
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Hoy to move the staff recommendation to your...
Yeah, if I may, and it makes sense to shorten as many names as we can, and accurately reflect their function. Counselor Quillan was in here earlier, Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and then Tott, which nobody can remember what it's actually really called. We'll be looking at those as well and potentially bringing forth some modifications.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Second reading of 7-2A.
Ordinance Bill Number 818, an ordinance vacating Vacation Lane Southeast. Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kaser is absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osek?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennet is absent.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I failed to earlier introduce our new city librarian, Sarah Strahl there in the back row. Started a day-after memorial that comes to us from Hillsborough, and I'm excited to have her. Do you want to say anything, Sarah? Quickly, don't wave.
Welcome, Sarah. Okay, seeing no other business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Whoop.
Other comment?
Other comment, okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor Protem and counselors. I wanted to say that today net neutrality died. I'm not quite sure what that means to the city of Salem. I know that the city of Salem has a contract with Comcast, but I don't know if that's just for the city, or whether, you know, the city, you know, staff and whatnot, or if it's for all people who live here. Clearly, I have some concerns about what that's going to mean for the future of all of us who have Internet access. In particular, I know that Comcast says they have a senior rate, but when you go out to try and get it, if you're already a member of Comcast, you can't get it. You have to get uninstalled from Internet from Comcast for 90 days before they will give you the senior rate. And then it's only for a period of time. So in the future, if we're negotiating a contract with Comcast, I would really like the council and/or the city manager to say, "Mr. Comcast, you must provide a senior rate that's comparable to what everybody else gets." But I'd also like the city staff and/or counselor to perhaps look at how this is going to impact us going forward in the community from our Internet access. So this is just a request for the future. Thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for bringing that up, Ms. Judy. And actually, Comcast was at our Cable Regulatory Commission meeting. And actually Comcast was at our Cable Regulatory Commission meeting this afternoon at 3:00 with the other gentleman and basically said they operate under net neutrality guidelines and will not be changing that, so we should not see any difference in our service area at all.
That's good news.
Okay. Thank you. Ron.
Good evening. Again, from Simpkins Neighborhood Association, I'd like to tell the neighbors on Saddle Club Road over by Corden Road and the new complex, shipping complex for Amazon, they have now put up their new earthen barrier along Corden Road, so people driving by don't see the activity at Amazon. I want to tell those residents, we have not forgot about them and that we are in the process of putting together a study for sound and a sound wall possibility on the west side of Corden Road between Highway 22 and Lancaster, which is the property right across from Amazon on Corden. And at this time, I want to say thank you very much and the residents, I haven't forgot you and we've contacted city, state and county officials. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Nobody else to address the city council tonight? I will call this meeting adjourned.